Howell Township Planning Board Meeting, Thursday, February 18th, 2021. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open. Adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 8th, 2021, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Tri-Town News. Second, on January 8th, 2021, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on January 8th, 2021, said notice was posted in the office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. For members of the public, please be advised that you will have a chance to ask questions and comment on applications once the chairman opens the hearing up to members of the public. If you wish to ask questions or comment on an application, you will need to use the Raise Your Hand feature, and we will bring you into the meeting one at a time. You will need to have audio and video capability. You will be sworn in, and you will need to give your name and address. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bavai?
Here.
Mr. Dorado?
Here.
Mr. Husser?
Here.
Chief Kudrick?
Here.
Mr. Leggio has been excused. Mr. Nacastro has been excused. Councilwoman Richmond?
Present.
Mr. Seaman?
Here.
Ms. Casper?
Here.
Mr. Cristiano? You're muted, Joe.
Here.
Thank you. And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, can everybody please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance? And a moment of silence for all of our first responders and our men serving here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, first on the agenda is approval of minutes, regular meeting, February 4th, 2021. Eligible voters, Mr. Bavai, Mr. Dorado, Mr. Husser, Chief Kudrick, Councilwoman Richmond, Ms. Casper, Mr. Cristiano, and myself. Do I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
I can.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bavai? Mr. Bavai?
Yes.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Councilwoman Richmond?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any vouchers?
We have no vouchers this evening. Yes, I had an email from Mr. Pape. He had submission waivers on this evening, and he has asked me to move them to February 4th, excuse me, March the 4th. And it's nothing that had to be noticed, but it is on tonight's agenda. We will not be hearing that.
Which one were those?
That was for SP 1079 New Horizon Properties.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Which is actually supposed to be 1078. That's a typo.
Okay, we have a resolution for case number?
Before you go there, we also have three ordinances that I sent out to the members to review. We need to comment on them this evening as the council is due to have a public hearing and vote on them on Tuesday.
Okay. Uh, do we wanna, I know one, which one do we want to tackle first? Do you want to tackle the stormwater?
Yeah, why don't we do the stormwater first, Mr. Chairman? And this is an exercise, actually, that every single municipality in New Jersey is going through at the moment. The DEP is in the process of amending their stormwater management regulations. Takes effect in March, and every municipality in New Jersey was required to amend their local stormwater management ordinance uh, in order to comply with the state regulations. The ordinance that you have is basically the model ordinance that the DEP has issued and recommended that the municipalities follow. Uh, my only caveat to it is just to understand that it applies to non-residential development. Residential development is still governed for stormwater management by the residential site improvement standards. But what you have before you, although, you know, it may be a little lengthy, is essentially the model ordinance that the DEP is requiring uh, all municipalities to, uh, to comply with. So, you know, from a legal perspective, I can tell you, you know, that our master plan certainly uh, strives to be in conformance with all state regulations. So from a legal perspective, I feel that it's substantially consistent with the master plan. Uh, Laura or Jen, I don't know if you guys want to jump in.
No, I, I agree with your assessment and would, would, uh, second the fact that that ordinance is consistent with the township's master plan.
Thank you.
And then just so the, the board members are aware, where this specifically differs and what the changes were, were the definition of a major development, um, the quarter acre threshold for impervious coverage, where previously it was a half acre of new impervious coverage. Uh, projects must now meet water quantity, quality, and recharge for all drainage areas of their site, not just an overall summation of those. Um, it defines and provides standards for green infrastructure, uh, which is a measure that, uh, treats stormwater through infiltration, um, or recharge. It also provides tables to show how applicants can comply with the green infrastructure requirements, and it provides provisions in there for maintenance and deed notices, um, for privately maintained basis.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, does anybody else have questions? Or comments? I'll see you done. I'll entertain a motion that the, uh, ordinance for stormwater management is consistent with our master plan.
I'll make a motion that the ordinance is consistent with our master plan.
Substantially consistent.
Sorry.
Substantially consistent, master plans.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Roll call. Mr. Bavai?
Yes.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Councilwoman Richmond?
Yeah, unmute yourself, Councilwoman.
I'm gonna come back to her. Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yeah.
Motion carries even without Councilwoman Richmond. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, next we need to discuss the ordinance number zero dash two one dash five. This is, uh, definitions of a craft distillery, and I believe assisted living facility. Counsel?
Um, yes, Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Chairman, can you still hear me?
Yes, okay.
All right, just, oh, there I am. Sorry about that. Um, essentially, Mr. Chairman, this goes along with, uh, permitted uses that are proposed in various zones or exist in various zones. The ordinance, uh, has a definition that really tracks the state statute for the distilleries. Um, you know, with, this is less legal, uh, so I'll defer to Jen on substantial consistency, but it basically brings some harmony to the definition on the local level and state level.
Great, thank you. Ms. Beeman?
Yeah, this goes, um, along with actually the next one as well, which just adds it as a permitted use to the HD1 zone. But there is specific recommendation in your most recent land use element amendment that speaks to, um, including definitions for craft distillery and other, um, types of uses. What, you know, we need to kind of beef up our definition section in the ordinance. So this comes out of that land use amendment, so I would say that it is consistent with the master plan.
Uh, as, as Mr. Cuchero said, substantially consistent.
Yes, definitely.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Newman, do you want to weigh in?
No, I don't think anything additional is required for me at this time.
Does anybody have any questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion that, uh, ordinance zero dash two one dash five is substantially consistent with our master plan.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bavai?
Yes.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Councilwoman Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next to look at is, uh, ordinance number zero dash two one dash six to determine if this is substantially consistent with our master plan. Counselor?
Um, this one Jen had alluded to before, and it's more planning than, than legal, so I think I'll defer to, to Jen on this.
Okay.
So what this does, it, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. What this does is it takes the two uses that were defined in the prior res, in the prior ordinance, 21-5, and it adds them as permitted uses in the HD1 zone. Again, it comes out of the land use amendment, and so I would submit to the board that they are, it is substantially consistent with the master plan.
Got it. And just for our new members, Ms. Beeman, HD1 zone is our Route 9 corridor, correct?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, Ms. Newman, do you have anything to add?
Chairman.
Okay, if anybody has any questions, if not, I'll take a motion that, uh, ordinance number zero two one dash six HD dash one is substantially consistent with our master plan.
So moved.
Okay. Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Bavai?
Yes.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Councilwoman Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay.
I have no other, no other correspondence.
Okay. All right, next is resolutions, case number SP dash one zero zero six Gil Petroleum. Eligible voters are Mr. Dorado, Mr. Husser, Mr. Seaman, and myself. Do I have a motion for approval of resolution?
Motion to approve.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries resolutions memoriam. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have a submission waiver up, case number SP dash one zero eight zero for 711.
Uh, you'd have to give me one second till I get the, in here.
Hi there. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Benjamin Wine of the firm Prime &amp; Tubell, attorney for the applicant 711. How you doing this evening?
Good, thank you.
Um, counsel, just before you get started, um, I know Jason has been here, and one of your other partners has been here before. I'm not sure you have.
I have not.
For the submission waivers, essentially, you know, unless you want to, you know, uh, add or supplement anything, essentially, we turn it over to our board engineer. She lists the submission waivers, and, you know, basically states whether she supports or has an issue with any of them. To the extent she has an issue with them, you know, we can hone it down, and if you want to, uh, you know, make any statements with regard to those, that's sort of how we do it.
Sure, not a problem. I will just add that I've spoken with Ms. Newman earlier today, and, uh, and I, I'm fully supportive of that approach.
Okay, all right, Laura, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, so, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the submission waivers for this application are specifically enumerated in number three of our February 16th, 2021, uh, review letter. Uh, a lot of the waivers, uh, it's important to note that this is an existing gas station which would be demolished and then rehabbed, so it's sort of a redevelopment of the site. So for those reasons, um, I take no exception to the granting of these waivers for the purposes of deeming the application complete. As counsel indicated, I did have the opportunity to speak with him. Some of these are planned things like lot designation within 200 feet, reference source for North Arrow, planning area, uh, and phone number and email of owner and applicant. He has agreed to provide those on a subsequent submission, but for the purposes of deeming this application complete, I take no exception to the granting of these waivers at this time.
Okay, thank you. Counselor, you want to confirm?
Yes, uh, the only, yeah, and I agree wholeheartedly with Ms. Newman. The only one, and, and I did discuss this one as well with Ms. Newman earlier today, is, uh, there is checklist item number 60, which she identified as a 2,000-foot downstream drainage analysis. That's the only one that, uh, I, and I have confirmed, I do have my engineer available on the call as well, though I don't, I don't see a need to, to, uh, have him join, but, uh, he is available. That's the only one that, uh, he had kind of indicated that he, he, you know, we've provided details within the stormwater report that's been provided, and, uh, to the extent that that's sufficient, then we would ask for that to be a waiver as well.
Mr. Wine, if I could, perhaps you didn't understand.
Sure.
So, because this is a redevelopment of the site, and it's not a major development, I did say that I support the granting of all of these waivers.
Got you, okay. All right, I missed up.
For the purposes of deeming it complete, now, you're warned that when you come to a public hearing, if the board finds that this information is necessary, you'd have to provide it. But just so clear, I took no exception to that for the purposes of deeming it complete.
Perfect, appreciate it. Then, then I, I agree wholeheartedly with Ms. Newman.
Great, okay. Thank you. Does anybody else have any comment? Seeing none, do I have a motion to grant the submission waivers for case number SP dash one zero eight zero?
I'll make a motion to approve submission waivers for SP dash one zero eight zero, 711.
Thank you.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bavai?
Yes.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Councilwoman Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just to confirm, I'll touch base with Ms. Rubano regarding, uh, scheduling at this point.
That would be fine.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Have a great evening, everybody.
You too.
Take care.
Okay, first application for the night, and only application, is case number SP dash one zero two seven eight, 41 Randolph Equities LLC.
We have Mr. Alfieri as the attorney on this application.
Okay.
Does everybody see me and hear me?
I was gonna say, which Mr. Alfieri? Now we know.
Better-looking one.
Yes, we see you, counsel.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. How is everybody tonight? Enjoying the snow, I hope?
Right.
So, uh, tonight we are here for a amended application. Um, if the board remembers, we were here back in 2018, around 2018, um, and the board granted a preliminary and final, um, site plan for a 111, or 110,000 square foot, uh, multi-tenant flex space. We're here tonight seeking an amendment to that. So I have two, uh, individuals who are gonna provide testimony tonight. I have the architect and the engineer and planner. I'm gonna have the architect come up first, explain to the board, um, what the, uh, proposed changes to the actual building would be, and then I'll have our, uh, engineer and planner come up, touch on the engineering side and then the planning side.
Mr. Alfieri, who is the architect?
The architect is Dave Collins.
I don't see him on our call. Would anybody else be on? Oh, yes, he, never mind, I got him. Thank you.
All right, good.
And, just hold on for one second. Sorry, everybody. Yeah. Uh, Counsel? Wait, before you get started, Counselor?
Yes.
Uh, Ms., I'm sorry, Mr. Cuchero?
Yes.
I, I have a, uh, inherent conflict of interest on this application, so I'm gonna have, need to excuse myself.
Okay, uh, just for purposes of the record and the minutes, uh, please indicate that the chairman has recused himself prior to, uh, to the application beginning, so there's no, there's no taint to the application. And, um, let me see.
Mr. Husser is the vice chair.
Mr. Husser?
Good luck, Nick.
You will be the chair for the, for the meeting tonight.
Thanks, Brian.
So before I jump off, is there any, is there any update to the master plan? Um, committee?
Um, I've emailed the council. I emailed the council at the last meeting. Um, right now, it seems that Councilman Bonavich-
You're frozen, Paul. We can't hear you.
I'm hearing him.
I hear him.
Do you hear me?
Yep, we heard you.
All right, well, basically, where we're at is, right now, we don't have any funding. I asked the council for funding.
Okay.
Uh, I've emailed twice. Right now, Councilman Bonavich, and now the mayor also seem to have some concerns. I guess they want to look at the budget, uh, past budgets, but right now, we are doing nothing.
Okay.
There's nothing we can do. Um, and I guess at this rate, who knows?
Okay, so I guess we'll leave it up to Councilwoman Richmond to lead up, lead the way, and let us know what the council wants to do. Okay?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Appreciate the update. Everybody, have a good night.
You too, thank you.
Thank you, take care.
Bye, Brian. Be safe.
Yeah, Brian.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that, um, I will, uh, swear in, uh, Mr. Collins. You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
You.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
David Collins, C-O-L-L-I-N-S.
Mr. Collins, can you please provide your qualifications for the board?
Certainly. I'm a, uh, registered architect in the state of New Jersey and, uh, the state of New York. I'm an Incorp certificate holder. I have a Bachelor of Architecture from Roger Williams University. I've been, um, licensed since 2007, been practicing since 1996.
Mr. Collins, we accept your credentials. Is there any way that you could step closer to your microphone?
Is that better?
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Thank you. Uh, so, Mr. Collins, we, we, um, I started off this application stating that, uh, we're here seeking an amended approval. Uh, can you please just touch on the, what the prior approval, the architectures look like, and what proposed changes we have?
Well, I can speak to the prior architectural drawings. I don't think I can pull them up on my screen. It wasn't part of our submission. Uh, but the, the building essentially is, is roughly the same size. The footprint is very similar. We've actually reduced the overall footprint by about 1,600 square feet. General shape of the building is the same. The height is a little different, and I'll explain, once we present our drawings, where it's different. And we have changed some of the facade elements on the building, uh, as well. Generally, the layout is very similar to what it was before, though.
Thank you. So if you could just go into the, the changes that are being proposed?
Everyone see my screen, okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
So this is drawing A1.01, uh, the, of the two architectural sheets that, that were submitted, and this sheet is showing the exterior elevations, a rendering, a rendered view from Randolph Avenue, and some samples of finished materials. And I'm gonna zoom into the rendering. That's the easiest way to describe the changes. Uh, this, this view on the previous design was similar in that there was a parapet wall along the front and a series of projected columns that projected off the building by three feet. Um, and that was to address, uh, some of the design criteria in your ordinance. And, uh, the, the, um, main side where the entrances are, uh, the top of the building was treated with, uh, ephes or stucco, if you want to call it stucco, and the base was masonry. And so we, we've kept generally the spirit of that in that we have, uh, decorative masonry base around the building, and we've changed the stucco top portion of the building to be an architectural flush insulated metal panel. This metal panel is a, a very attractive panel, uh, with a stippled effect on it, uh, to give it the appearance of, of stucco, but it is much more durable and, um, easier to maintain, and it tends to hold its, its initial look much longer. Uh, but the major change that we've done is instead of having a generally flat facade with projected columns, we, we took a different approach. What we did is we created a geometric scheme where we have a series of stepping volumes. So, uh, in the corner, the entry corner, we have the highest stepping volume, and these, each of these pieces not only steps back in plan, but also recedes in height. And, and because of the vanishing points, or that may not be completely clear, but this, uh, le- leftmost volume is, is a little over three feet taller than the one next to it, and again, next to it, and again, next to it. So these elements, uh, recede in both directions. And we also marked this corner with a large two-story entry piece with a projected canopy. So if this building ends up functioning as a single tenant user, this would be the main entrance for that tenant. And they, they could have their offices in, in this corner, and they could, uh, you know, use the rest of the building for warehouse space. And we also created a series of recessed architectural entries. So by recessing these entries, uh, for the office area, uh, we not only get shelter when people come in, um, you know, to the front door, you're, you're out of the rain, uh, if it's raining out, and, uh, it also creates that visual stepping that your ordinance wants. The, these offices project a little over three feet into the building, so that breaks out the, the overall appearance of this rather long facade into smaller pieces. And, yeah, we, we tried to keep it very clean where we had solid masonry and then all glass, so that, that play of, of solid and void all the way down the length of this building. We also recessed the first bay beyond the main entry, um, e- entry element so that this corner element would really stand on its own and, and not have anything kind of fighting it. So we also recessed that here. Um, th- those are really the major changes, uh, from our, our proposed design, uh, compared to the original design. Um, moving-
Mr. Collins, just to touch on the height that you mentioned earlier. So what, what is the proposed height for the front portion of the building?
Sure, so I'm gonna move over to drawing number three, which is the, the elevation, the south elevation that faces Randolph Road. And what we've done is we, we've created 90% of this building, uh, as a gabled roof with a lower roof. Actually, 90% of our, um, our building area actually complies with the height requirements, and that's demonstrated here, this 41 feet, five inch elevation from the median grain, uh, the average grade plane to the median gable roof in the back of this building. The only portion that is raised is the first 50 feet of the southwest corner of the building, that main first volume, uh, that we showed in the rendering. You can see that that, uh, the aver- the height of the shed roof is 49 feet, one inches. So what we've done is we've taken what would have traditionally been a fully gabled building, and this front bay, we've changed it to a shed. So that slopes from the low side on the right of the screen to the high side on the left of the screen, and that allowed us to create these stepping volumes that stepped down and recede and push away from the street. Without that shed roof extension, we couldn't do that. So thi- this is the portion that requires the variance from, uh, grid line R to X. And I'll show you, just so you understand the depth of that. Um, well, you can see here, but you can see that it's this first piece. Once, once you get beyond this first piece, the building would have been compliant with the height requirements. You can see that here, too, in the rendering, that most of this building is much lower than this one element in the front. So this, this kind of acts like a tower- So this, this kind of acts like a tower, acts like an entry marker piece and also, um, you know, sets up those geometries. So one, one thing I wanna note, um, the, the really, the reason, I can describe the reason that we wanted to make this change from the previous design easily fr- uh, from the, uh, loading dock side of the building. Uh, the original scheme was a regular gable roof that came up and back down, and the parapet height was much higher, it was still at the, not at the height that I have it, but it was much higher than the building. And what happens is the roof is now pitching down and it's coming to a parapet, and that's a really, um, bad detail that could trap water, snow, overload a roof. And so we wanted to, you know, avoid having that potential problem, and so by using a shed roof and having this pitch all the way up to the front face of the building in this area, it allowed us to put these parapets to make the building look clean on the street and, uh, eliminated that potentially big problem with, uh, a valley gutter. So moving to the floor plan quickly, uh, the footprint generally is still the same, again, it's sixteen hundred square feet less. And the reason it's less is because we stepped the Randolph roadside in, whereas this an originally was flat across the front and had columns that projected into the front yard. So by doing this, we've also eliminated the previously approved front yard, um, variance, we, we no longer need that variance. And then you can see on the bottom, you can see these recesses, I'll jump in just, uh, one little area here. You can see how these, all these office areas, uh, are pulled in and fully glazed, so you get the solid and the void and the solid and the void. And we also show just a general layout of how this may be divided up, or you know, there's bigger units towards the street and smaller units towards the back, and we did add some, uh, loading doors so that we could have smaller units, we're still complying with the five thousand square foot minimum. But as an example, uh, Unit I has a garage door to drive in and has the office entry, so, uh, it's a, a good mix of different type, size units. So from, from design, uh, guideline standpoint, um, Jen correctly points out in, um, in her letter that you know, we, we are, are complying, um, with, with the letter of the law on the west side of the building with these recesses, I, I believe we're complying with the spirit of the ordinance on the north side, although technically our sections are seventy-seven feet and not fifty feet, but we are stepping them back more than three feet as we go back. Um, we do have a wall with no windows, but I think that, um, the architecture, um, supports that. It, it's really supposed to be a clean geometric scheme, it's not, uh, you know, more of a traditional, um, windows and cornice lines and things like that. Um, but on-
Dave, uh, be- before you go on, uh, Jen, can you chime in on that?
Sure, so tech- technically, these fenstrations or the bump outs in the building are supposed to happen at fifty-foot intervals. Um, they're a little bit longer than fifty feet, Dave, can you put the, the elevation or the rendering up so we can see? It's this side that we're talking about, right, that we're looking at?
This side.
Right, so as you can see, you know, those panels, let's just call them, are about seventy-seven plus or minus feet, yes?
Yes.
But then they step back, and then the next one steps back further and the next one steps back further, so I really don't take exception to this, if the board were to act favorably, because the intent of this is to make sure you don't have like a solid wall of building. They do break it up by having that like water table, I mean, I don't know if I'm using that right word, Dave, but it's like the bottom portion of the building looks like a different material and different texture, so it's not just one massive wall of building. And this is also the short side of the building compared to how you go back into the site. Um, so technically, they're supposed to be every fifty feet, but I don't take exception to the design as proposed. And Dave knows that I'm not the easiest sell on the architecture, so, um, I, I, I really don't have a problem with it.
Thanks, Jen.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I mean, I can just, you know, just to wrap it up, I don't wanna spend, you know, too much time, but, you know, the, the materials are shown here, you can see, these are the panels that would be on the top portion of the building, you know, they're, they're stippled purposely to look like stucco. This panel is a gray one and we're gonna use the white panel. And this is a, a decorative, uh, ground face CMU, uh, ground face are really beautiful, they expose the aggregate and they look, um, you know, very finished. So those are, those really are the two materials on the building.
Great.
Any questions for, um, Mr. Collins? Seeing none, I can have, uh-
Yeah, I guess Dante, the only question, I'm sorry for jumping in, is, um, is Mr. Collins gonna testify about the sign or is that Mr. Ward?
I'm gonna, Dave, do you have anything on the side or are we gonna have, uh, Mr. Pat do it?
I think Pat can, can speak to the, uh, facade sign, uh, Jen, we did eliminate the street identification sign that we had on the building, so that is, is gone.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Ron, Ron, do I have to open up to any public comment on this right now?
No, you can, if you wish, you can wait till the end.
I'm gonna wait till the end.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, I'm gonna call, uh, Pat Ward, who's gonna testify in his, uh, capacity as an engineer and a planner. Mr. Ward, you there?
I am, yep, can you hear me?
Hey, just swear you in first, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Sure, Patrick Ward, W.A.R.D.
Okay, if you could qualify, Mr. Ward, Mr. Alfieri.
Uh, Mr. Ward, if you could please provide your qualifications for the board?
Uh, sure, I have a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering from Drexel University, um, Licensed Professional Engineer in the state, uh, for coming up on eight years and, uh, Licensed Professional Planner in the state coming up on seven. I've been before this board, uh, handful of times, uh, recently and, um, despite throughout the state. Thank you, Mr. Husser.
Uh, Mr. Ward, it, could you get into the, the engineering aspect first and we'll touch on, um, Mr. Collins touched on the, the aesthetics and what, what, what we're proposing as a change, can you touch on, um, the overall, what's the overall size of the building? How, how much of a change is it?
So, yeah, good question, and, and, you know, I'll, I'll, uh, hit that a little harder in a little bit. But really, the, the building footprint itself is reducing by about sixteen hundred square feet, it's, um, it was previously approved at just over a hundred and ten thousand square feet footprint. Um, now we have on the, the ground floor, uh, a first floor footprint of one hundred eight thousand eight hundred sixty square feet. Um, plus this mezzanine that Mr. Collins referred to, which is one thousand five hundred seventy-one square feet. So slightly smaller building, I mean, on this size, it's a, it's a tiny bit, but it is a smaller building. Um, Mr. Alfieri, what I'd like to do, just run through, 'cause I know there's some newer board members here that didn't, um, vote on the prior application and approve it, um, just briefly, and I think this rendering really kind of says a lot about the site. Um, it's twelve acres, just over twelve acres, but i- in the rear portion, um, we're constrained heavily by environmental cons- considerations, we have Dix Brook that runs through the rear, it has a flood hazard area, uh, there are wetlands associated with it. But the main constraint that really impacts our footprint of development is a three hundred foot riparian zone, which you can kind of see along the rear of our property, and, you know, we're based on, you know, the available NJDEP permits, we're, we're really avoiding, uh, approaching into that, we did previously. So, um, one other item that's constraining our property is a JCPN L overhead transmission wire right of way. And it's actually the easternmost two hundred feet of the property, so, you know, considering, there's, and there's limitations there. Obviously, we could put the parking lot there and some of the stormwater management, um, but there's limitations as per, you know, lighting height, types of plantings we can put in, um, and other structures. So our buildable area is where the building is, and that's why, you know, the building has its somewhat unusual geometry, um, but that's why it's sited where it is. Um, you know, and briefly, from like a thirty thousand foot view of this project, um, it's generally the same as to what the board approved in two thousand eight. Have, you know, just about a hundred and ten thousand square foot building, albeit with a slightly smaller footprint in the southwest corner of the site. We have two entrances, um, we have a drive aisle that surrounds the buildings with parking on the west and the north side and, and loading docks on the east, as you can see. Um, we just zoom in just to touch since we don't look at the back of the property anymore, sorry about that. One more, okay. This isn't- Okay, so, um, generally speaking, and I touched upon stormwater just briefly, just to, you know, orient the board with what we're doing. The site is a low spot regionally, so what that means is we accept stormwater from our site, off-site and Randolph Road. With that consideration, we're, we have to mimic the existing conditions, so we are now improving a, uh, less improved site, um, with the building in the parking lot, we have to collect and mitigate the stormwater in these two surface basins that you see, and we also have two, um, subsurface recharge pipe areas. Um, we're not permitted to have an overflow off-site, like say to the, to the creek, because we don't have one today. So we're handling everything onsite and, uh, taking care of it, um, within these stormwater management features. We have one hundred and nineteen spaces, um, which is in excess of the ninety-one required by ordinance. Um, the board professionals did both note that the zoning table has appeared to not include the mezzanine. Turns out, the calculation did consider the mezzanine, but the actual number in the calculation was wrong for square footage, so ninety-one is the requirement where we have a hundred and nineteen. Um, we have ADA spaces, um, all the built, parking spaces immediately facing the building will have bollards as previously approved. Um, the ADA spaces have so changed slightly in that they're more spread out, um, we have six spaces on the west side of the building and one at the rear. Um, Ms. Newman noted that the one at the rear, she would like testimony about, you know, fact that it's between two overhead doors. Um, we understand that, um, however, uh, this is a prime location for access, ADA access to five units in the rear, five of the smaller unit. So, um, we feel that that is an appropriate location. Um, and then on the east side, we have fifteen loading docks for the units. Um, the last three units have restricted truck sizing, um, due to the circulation limitations on site, and that's really as a result of JCPN L right of way. Um, refuse, uh, for trash and recycling.
Sure, just before you go on, those last three units that have restricted, uh, truck sizes, can, can you just be a little more specific on that so I can get it in the resolution?
Sure, uh, and it is, it's, it's exactly the same as it was prior, um, so I'll say it this way, the front twelve, um, sorry, the, the last three units are restricted to single unit trucks. Um, the reason for that, and where everything else is, um, tractor trailer loading. And the reason for that is just it's circulation issue, uh, you know, we feel that tractor trailers cannot access those last three units because there's just not enough pavement to do it. And the reason that's the case is because we have the two overhead transmission towers for JCPN L in that, you know, lovely shaped island right here on the side of the building. Um, you know, we, previously, we worked with JCPN L quite extensively to one, have them bless what we're proposing, but also to confirm some of these, you know, particular requirements, so, um, that's the basis.
Is single unit truck, is that the term of art, or do we need to express it in terms of a wheelbase?
Um, I don't necessarily have a, a firm number, and for wheelbase, I would just say non-articulated, probably.
Okay.
A limitation, everything.
Okay.
No problem. Mm-hmm. Um, refuse, uh, we have a trash, this is same as last application, we have a refuse area located in the northwest corner. Um, we feel it's sufficiently sized for either one tenant or all of the tenants based on Mr. Collins' floor plan. Um, and again, that was previously approved. It touched upon this, um, actually Dave answered it, but we are only proposing one sign, uh, it's the ground mounted sign that we had proposed previously, so we're not here seeking any relief for two signs. In terms of utilities, uh, and other improvements, building will be served by public water, electric and gas. Um, one of the extensive talking points at the last application was water and fire suppression. As a result, the applicant agreed to and pursued approval from American Water to do a water main extension from five forty-seven to the site. It's been approved, um, and it will continue to be part of this application. We are proposing an onsite septic system at the rear of the building, we do not have sewer along the site frontage, so we have to do septic. Uh, this system hasn't changed and has been approved by the Health Department, um, and will be installed as part of the construct. And a couple of things that the applicant agreed to with the township with the last approval. Um, one is a thirty-foot right of way dedication along the front, that's, um, continuing. Uh, we're proposing to widen Randolph Road to include a curved shoulder, um, and we're also proposing to repave Randolph Road full width um, across the entire site frontage. So none of this is changing, it's, um, consistent with the original proof. A couple of other things in Ms. Newman's letter, um, in regard to the ordinance standards of performance, we see no issue with those various sections for compliance, um, and will comply as needed. And then, um, we have no issues working through, um, the technical and landscaping items noted in Ms. Newman's review letter, um, to address her comments in the, the board's certified tree expert. Um, we take no exception, we'd be happy to work with them as a condition of approval and then satisfy their requirements. Um, we had several design waivers, uh, approved in the two thousand eighteen approval, and they're continuing. Um, some will, some slightly changed, but continuing in, in the same theme. Uh, average lighting illumination was, is zero point seven foot candles, where half a foot candle is the maximum average. Um, for those that recall, last time we justified this waiver because of, um, the unusual site constraints with JCPN L. They have a limitation on the height of the fixtures, so we have to have more fixtures than we normally would. Well, it's, it's, it's a little devi- it, uh, it's a little confusing there, we have more fixtures where we have to have light pole fixtures, but we have less light poles because we're trying to avoid them, so we have a series of building mounted lights on the east side, and then we have a series of light poles on the east side of the parking lot. Um, this leads to that excess average. Um, the ordinance requires one tree and one shrub for every ten spaces. Again, we're continuing this request, and this is due to JCPN L right of way, where we're not allowed to plant additional trees in their right of way for maintenance and safety reasons, we also have the DEP area, which cannot be replanted as it already is, fully wooded. Waivers required for no landscaping between the loading area and the building, and the building, this is continuing. We're still requesting the waiver from installing sidewalk along Randolph Road. This is continuing as Randolph Road does not have any sidewalks in the area, and it's not necessarily a pedestrian-friendly street. And then Mr. Collins touched upon the architectural facade articulation, that is technically still a design waiver. Uh, we were previously granted the waiver for the north and east sides of the buildings. Uh, the building north because it's the back, uh, and east because it is the loading dock, and from a functional standpoint, uh, it's tough to meet that ordinance. And we're continuing to seek that waiver request. Um, when I get to planning testimony, I'll explain why we feel we've done a better job addressing that specific ordinance requirement on the other facades, which is the south and west. Um, that concludes my engineering, if we wanted a, a hard break between engineering and planning, uh, Mr. Alfieri, Mr. Cuchero.
Thanks, Pat. Uh, Mr. Alfieri, anything else?
Nothing further on the engineering side unless, uh-
Uh, any, any planning board members have questions or the professionals?
Mr. Chair, I would just like a detail of the ground mounted sign, I didn't seem to, I wasn't able to locate one in the plan set.
I think we'd be happy to provide as a condition of approval, intend to be fully compliant, we do not have one, Ms. Beam, so you, you, you weren't searching for something? Yeah.
Okay, yeah, if you could just provide me with a typical detail, that would be great.
See no issue with that?
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Jen.
Mr. Chairman, I would say that, uh, Mr. Ward has adequately gone through our report, and he did agree to all the technical comments that were contained in Item Six. So as a result, I have nothing additional to add at this time.
Thanks, Laura.
All right, Mr.-
Hi, Dante.
Time, time to switch hats, let's put on your planning hat.
It's a si- it's a similar hat, just as good, right? Okay, so, um, just going back to the original approval real quick, we were granted the one variance for front yard setback. We're proposing to eliminate that variance here, um, as you can see, this is a fully compliant, the building envelope with setbacks. Um, but we are proposing one new variance that Mr. Collins mentioned for building. Um, as Mr. Collins testified to, that southwest corner of the building, which is really in this area, has a shed roof and the peak- has a shed roof and the peak of the shed has a building height of 49.2 feet or 45 feet is the maximum. This deviation was carefully considered as Mr. Collins alluded to and allows for overall improvement. The architectural building design and aesthetic. As I said, the deviation is very much isolated to the southwest corner. About 53 feet beyond the front facade, the roof type changes to that gable roof, whose mean roof height is about four feet below the maximum for the zone. The intent here is to provide an improved facade along Randolph Road and along the western side of the building. So previously, we had a, a faux three by three column or columnar, columnar projections on both the west and the south facades. Really that was meant to address the architectural articulation standard. And we did that and we, we did address it. However, you know, that, that wasn't necessarily the strongest architectural element on the building. That projection also led to our previously granted front yard setback. So what we're doing here is not only fixing the roofline issues, we're actually fixing that architectural element. And we have a new front facade where we don't have those, those dummy projections. We have this stepping back and stepping down front facade, which we feel captures the intent of that articulation ordinance much better than before. The front facade steps down as it steps back, as Mr. Collins said, more than the three feet is required to creating a softer front facing Randolph Road and a more aesthetically pleasing industrial building. Generally, we feel that this redesign and the associated variance for building height is a better alternative than what was previously approved and previously designed. It's an improved design, has improved materials, makes for a more viable and successful project in the special economic developments. We feel the application furthers the purposes of planning in the following ways. This is an appropriate use and development as we're permitted use in the zone. This application and the redesign secure safety from fire, flood and other natural manly disasters. Building design is, is done to the latest building codes and is designed to work alongside this JCP and L right of way. The application provides adequate light air and open space. We have a smaller footprint by about 1,600 square feet and we eliminated a prior front yard setback deviation with redesign. The application promotes a desirable visual environment. And as I mentioned before, there's a strong intention of providing a more appealing Randolph Road facade while doing a better job addressing the ordinance requirements for facades and the articulations. For the negative criteria, we feel that there are little to no impacts of the new building height variance to the public, nor to any neighboring property. As I said, it's isolated to the southwest corner, whereas the rest of the building beyond the first 50 feet or so has a compliant building height. And the building facade steps down and steps back as you go east along the facade, creating a softer feel from Randolph Road as you go east. We feel the design is less impactful than the previously granted variance for the front yard setback, which again has been eliminated. This is a smaller building footprint, as I mentioned, and this is a permitted use in the zone and all other bulk requirements are met. So in my opinion, the proposed development would not cause substantial detriment to the public good, nor substantially impair the intent purpose of the zone plan. Non-balance, it's my opinion that the benefits of the application substantially outweigh its detriments, giving you the ability to prove the application with confidence.
Thanks, Pat.
Thank you.
We, we have, we have nothing further at this time. I'm, at first I'm opening up to any members of the planning board, questions?
I have a question.
Sure. Joe, go ahead.
So according to the panels, they're 70 feet long. They're 20 feet longer than the 50 foot allowance, correct?
Approximately 77 feet long.
Okay, 77. So what exactly is the variance that you're seeking? Is it? I keep on hearing the 50 on the, on the panel, but the panel is actually 77 feet long. So is it 50 or 77 over the height limit?
If, if I could just jump in, it's not the panels that we're talking about. The issue with the 50 to 77, that's a horizontal issue that every 50 feet, the building needs to bump in and out. They have, they're exceeding the height requirement in that first section. So it really has nothing to do with the 50 and the 77. It's the height in that first corner that Mr. Collins had gone through exceeds the height requirement in the zone by about four plus or minus feet. So they're allowed to have 45, they're at like 49.2, Pat?
That's correct.
So it's just the height of that corner. It has nothing to do with the length of the 50 feet.
Gotcha.
Thanks, Jen. Anyone else? Seeing as none, Eileen, I guess we open up the public?
We're done. Yes.
Yeah, this would be for both questions and for testimony.
Thanks, Ron.
Ready?
I hope so.
Okay. At this point in time, the chairman is opening up the hearing for members of the public that may have questions or comments on this application. Anyone wishing to ask questions or comment, please use the raise your hand feature. I will bring you into the meeting one at a time. Once again, you do need audio, video, and you will need to be sworn in and give your name and address.
And Eileen, just for my edification, what, what's the typical five minutes?
There's no timeframe. It's as long as you're relevant and not repetitive.
Thank you.
I'm not seeing anyone raise their hands. Once again, any members of the public that have questions or comments on this application, please use the raise your hand feature so you can be brought into the meeting.
If there's none, Eileen, let's close the public.
Hey, public is closed. Thank you.
That being said, looking for a motion to approve.
I know that there's a few of us on here that have been part of this right from the beginning and that includes me. And I know that we've been back and forth with this, with this plan for quite some time. To me, the applicant has provided many concessions for us. The justification by Mr. Ward is convincing in reference to the variance, it's about five feet. Am I correct? In the front there?
A little under, yeah.
I don't think that's excessive. You're giving up one and just asking for another, which I don't have a problem with. I believe the benefits outweigh the detriments. And as such, I am making a motion to approve SP 1027A, 41A Randolph.
Thanks, Chief, to have a second.
Second.
Your Seaman.
Roll call. Mr. Bavai? You're muted.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Hut, excuse me, Chief Kudrick?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman Richmond? You're muted.
Give the thumbs up.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
And Vice Chairman, Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Motion carries. Application's approved.
Thank you, Chairman and members of the board. We really appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you. Be safe. Take care of you as well.
Take care.
What is next?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, going down the agenda, there's nothing for executive session. There's listed below that remote meeting protocol. I would recommend that if we're going to discuss that, that our chairman be here. But what I can tell you is I, I haven't read it yet, but last year when the DCA came out with their emergency regulations, within those regulations, there was required meeting protocol. So the board did adopt meeting protocol last year pursuant to those regulations. So we are operating under a protocol that matches up with the DCA. But we can, we can carry this to the, to the next time to discuss what any differences may be. But I think it's more appropriate when the board chairman is here. But like I said, we did adopt protocol consistent with the emergency regulations when they came out.
And that was just something that the chairman asked me to include on all the agendas in the future while we're-
Oh, okay. Oh, so Eileen, is this just what we already approved?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So it's for informational purposes for people that are looking at the agenda.
Correct.
Just, just a informational point. Is that only in effect as like EO 103 is still good to go or?
No, no. What, what happened was the legislature amended the Open Public Meetings Act last year. When that amendment happened, it authorized the DCA and its executive director to issue emergency regulations in the, which are codified in the administrative code. They did that and they became effective immediately. But what they did also was they proposed permanent regulations. Those were published in the Nutraceutical Register and they were going through the public comment process. When you look at the amendment to the Open Public Meetings Act, it's meant to match up with the length of the state of emergency. So the state of emergency was declared March 9th of last year. We don't know when it'll be lifted, but it is intended to apply at least as long as that state of emergency is in effect.
Understood. Thanks, Ron.
Yeah, I have nothing further.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
There, be safe all.
Thank you too. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.